All the meetings order, thank you everyone for attending whether you're attending online or here in person with us. We'd like to acknowledge before we began that our school district is on a shared portal and has seen territories of this fellow nation and that includes massive Auckland and Scallets First Nations, sorry. You'll raise your hands to that. Moving forward, just a couple of things before we go ahead. If you need to move to adopt the agenda for it, so all those in favor of the agenda. And just before we began, I just wanted to let people know that we really do recognize just how difficult the whole situation is, whether your staff or students, and we really do appreciate your patience because there is so much that is changing just daily, hourly sometimes, where you got told no five minutes and then later you got told not yet and then five minutes, yes or okay, so things really are changing very rapidly. Just that, you know, all of us on the board and our senior teams making these decisions, our parents and grandparents or our kids in our schools now, grandkids in our schools now, or coming up in the next few years, we've got friends and family that are staff, students, all of that kind of stuff, so I just want to try to reassure people that this is, it's difficult for all of us, all of us are not just making decisions without that human, that humanity piece, which I think is really important, and sometimes there seems to be a lot of, you know, the decisions we're making in the back, but a lot of us are making these decisions and having these meetings with our own families, friends, et cetera, in mind. Would just like to say that, just in advance, that there are some things, there have been some overarching themes that we've been dealing with in terms of both media issues as well as issues that parents are bringing forth and that we are going to be addressing throughout the meeting today. That's going to include things like spots in schools and programs of choice, different, talking about the learning groups, what happens if a staff student, et cetera, gets sick? Just why schools are a little different than, considered a little different than other places, so we are going to touch on some of those things as we go through, as we go through the plan here. So now I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Mr. Wilson here, who is going to go through the plan for us.
Thank you Chair. Just actually before I start, a couple of things, I have about 25 people on Zoom here, so hopefully they can hear me, I'm going to take over your screens like the outer limits or whatever in a minute, but I thought first of all, just for fun, and I hope you don't get motion sick, I'm going to just turn so you can see, look, there's the people socially. Oh, oops, there you go. Alright, so there we go, that's the human beings that are here. Excellent. Okay, now I'm going to try and share my screen, which is going to be the PowerPoint. Here. And, oops. Oh, and somebody's not on mute. Okay, so. Thank you for the play by play, Janice. Okay, so we're going to run through the PowerPoint and trustees, as you have questions, feel free to interject along the way and then of course we'll do stuff after. I also have on here, this is not what was sent to the ministry, we have two things that were sent out, one is a rather lengthy kind of 25, 26 page health and safety thing. I'm not telling Bron when you did that, just so you know. And the second, the second one is actually a fairly short, just a few pages, which is the actual sort of plan with the, it's I believe questions the Ministry of Education was asking. And just to put things in perspective, at about 11 o'clock this morning, I got quite a lengthy email from the ministry with all kinds of questions about our plan. Five minutes later, somebody else from the ministry called me and said, yeah, it's good, it's all, it's all good. So, things are the same all over. And obviously this presentation is in broad generalizations because each site is going to be a specific something. So the first one is in case anyone didn't know, we've had a pandemic and part of that has been the how schools have responded. In June, we were told that stage two, which was the most likely, but not necessarily what we were doing in September, was basically full time elementary and basically half time at secondary level, and we all went off on theoretical vacations knowing that. A few weeks later, we were told we're doing stage two, but it's significantly different with the learning groups or cohorts or super bubbles or various other terms people have used. And the purpose of those learning groups, of course, it's not actually sort of to protect the school or community per se, it's actually about controlling the spread of COVID and, if you will, keeping it in rather than keeping it out. And of course, a variety of updates have happened along the way. When we think about what we're doing, whether we're talking about us school, the school district, the province of British Columbia, the first thing is, we want to do something that's going to give the best education possible under the circumstances to students. And there's a lot of balancing in that, right? And we had to think about whether we do an eights system, for example, which is what one of our neighboring districts is doing, where you only take one course at a time in middle and secondary. And what are the benefits and what are the costs of that kind of program? The next focus of course is we want things to be as safe as possible and indeed the mental safety and so on for staff and students as well. And these are tricky because, for example, we've had parents email me upset that, you know, when we do wear our masks, we are upsetting people and traumatizing them, so we shouldn't wear them. And safety is another one where I've had people ask, can you guarantee 100%? I can't. Just like if you drove here today, you might get in a car accident, but if you walked, you might also slip and hurt yourself. There is no 100% guarantee, but we have to do the best job we can with the resources we have. The next one, and I think this one is really big, as I think about what's going on, is the attitude and judgment we're all making of each other as we go through this. If you cast your mind back to a year ago and you could just see this meeting right now, you know, I, a few weeks ago, I was in scenic and lovely Chetwind and I went into the IGA with my daughter, we're both wearing our masks, and if looks could kill, we would have been shot right there because people were not happy to see that we were wearing masks at all. And we have people that are being judgy about the fact that people are wearing masks, we have people being judgy about the fact that people are not wearing masks, and then one of the messages is if you feel sick, stay home. So Janice doesn't feel well and stays home. I think Janice has COVID. And so that starts to spread through the system. Janice comes back two days later, she's fine because, you know, she had a sniffle or whatever, maybe it was allergies, whatever, she comes back in and now people, what are you doing back here? Or I heard you had COVID, don't you infect me and so on, so there's a lot of stigma and so on, on all branches of politics and so on, and I think one of the great benefits of a public education that we all want to promote is the ability to have difference and still come to compromise and resolution through things. The next is ongoing improvement, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to give a prediction that two weeks and two days from now, the first day that children are in school, mistakes will be made. That's going to happen, I cannot guarantee that that won't happen and that we will learn from, oh, you know what, we just need to have the kids go one way down this hallway or it was better with two ways or whatever. And we'll fix it, we will improve it, we will do better, but I, there's no way I can see that ever. When I think about things like Plexiglas shields, we're ordering more Plexiglas shields, do we have enough? I'm not sure yet because we don't know about a certain situation that happens at a certain school, et cetera. And finally is open and ongoing communication that as people notice things that don't work correctly, that they talk at say either the school level or indeed the district level, hey, I noticed this thing, I'm concerned about it, or maybe there's a better way to do it, or whatever the situation is. So, let's go into the details of, semi details I guess, of what we'd like to do for our restart. Learning groups are a big challenge. It's not too difficult at an elementary level where learning groups are 60, so you could really have a class or two classes or in the case of primary, in theory, three classes could be a learning group. That group of students does not need to be six feet or more apart, we could be closer together if we were all one learning group. It gets trickier and they can also play sports together and various other activities and with, within certain scope, there are some items they can share and so on. It gets much more challenging at a high school level and a middle school level. And we, we did some very poor planning and mission by having a very large high school, it's only grades 10 to 12, where there's the most elective choice, and by implementing the new curriculum with, for example, five kinds of English 10, that was also a mistake, we should have stuck with the old curriculum and gotten in trouble for that. So created a situation where we have to make a decision between student choice and how we do learning, because you basically cannot have students get the things they want and keep them on a regular timetable with 120 students, et cetera, because there's just too much choice. Maybe back in the 1950 grad program where everybody took socials 11, everybody took English 11, et cetera, you could do it, and you can't really pull it off on our scale. Conversely, having been a principal of a school with, you know, 250 high school students in an old curriculum, no problem, you split it into kind of sort of juniors and seniors, away you go, you're fine. And we have schools, we have, hello, we have a school over there, Fraser View is effectively one learning group. So, one solution is to reduce student choice, which I've just talked about, if you make students all take the same thing or almost the same thing, you've solved your problem. Students and parents probably don't really like that one that much. Another solution is to shift your learning groups frequently, again, the 120 is a number of students, but it doesn't say how long they have to be that learning group. So for example, you've probably heard Chilliwack is doing eights, where all students take one course for 28 days, then they flip to the next course after that and so on. What this allows them to do is have 100% attendance in school all day, but of course there are significant drawbacks or quarters in eight systems. So, for example, I love social studies, I'm not sure if I love social studies enough to do it for five hours a day for a month. And then particularly is issues, if you took math right now at the beginning of grade 10, and then again next year in May of grade 11, I am concerned about that because we also have to think about those kind of long term vision of education and, and yes, there will be issues with COVID in future years probably and so on, but we kind of need to plan around, I'm sorry, if you can just use the chairs that are cleaned, thank you. Anyway, you get the idea, so there's a lot to balance against here. Another thing you can do is, for example, this actually could be a class right now, this is very exciting class called Committee of the Whole, but what we're doing right now is, okay, we have a large group of people here, but you'll notice you're socially, well, few exceptions, socially distant from each other, yeah, anyway. So what that means is that you could have learning group one and learning group two doing the same activity, they just have to be separated from each other, so you can imagine some event that could happen in a room like this or a gymnasium or something, we could have more than one group sort of semi come together and you could do something that way. So let me run through our, our models, where they're at right now and, you know, just to be clear, we got approval from the ministry today, we actually don't have it in writing yet, I just thought I'd mention that, but getting a phone call from them I figure counts, and so we will post our, our stuff up on the website for tomorrow. Anyway, so elementary learning groups are typically two classes, including the classroom teacher and potentially EAs that are connected to that class, you need to not go above 60, and I just want to be clear on this, principals, there's a few in the room, 60 doesn't mean 61 or 68 or any other number, it means 60 or fewer. And if you get to 62, that's, you need to create two learning groups of kind of 31 each. The, how those learning groups are determined depends on the school. To give a couple of different examples, Duroche typically has sort of a, let's call it 75 students, it will probably be fewer than that this year based on what we're seeing as information coming from some of our First Nations partners. So it's possible that that could be one learning group, we'll have to see what the exact numbers are. And though, if that was the case, it'd be one learning group, K to six. But if you take a school like Albert McMahon with roughly 400 students, that's not going to happen, so you'd probably pair up a couple of similar grade classes, say two grade five classes as a learning group, and that would be distinct from the next one, which is a grade five and a sixth class or, or something to that, that effect. To paint a picture for people, the learning group can share a lot of activities together, they could play a sport together, they can participate in art project together and so on. No, we're not allowing them to share food and water and, and so on, but the idea is that you're containing within that group, so if there is a case where COVID emerges into or enters into that class or learning group, we know where the contacts go. Let's say that this is one learning group over here and I'm in a different learning group, we can still participate in things, but I just have, I have to be this far away, so I could draw pictures to students, say, look at my hippopotamus, but I have to be over here, I have to be separate from other people. Other staff in the building, whether it's itinerant district staff, teachers on call, the principal, vice principal and so on, are not generally considered part of the learning group, there are exceptions, if you're the vice principal that teaches the grade five class, you're in that learning group, but you're also of course still the vice principal and have to do things around that building. And thus you have to act accordingly. Now if I was, in theory, I could come into a building like this without a mask on and I'm okay because I'm far enough away from people, but speaking personally in my role, I feel it's important that I'm wearing a mask as I go through schools, also for my personal protocol, I'm going to try and stay, only visit a school a day, just so I'm not crossing over between schools and so on. It's especially challenging by the way for something like a principal or vice principal because of course they have to interact with all the students in a school and they have to try and manage it, so that's where things like masks and so on come in, because I don't know that we can guarantee that they're always going to be six feet or greater apart from all the students in the building, right? So, next, middle schools. So middle school is going to work on a quarter system model, and I've already identified some of the issues with a quarter system, and those are things we just, we have to be aware of what those limitations are around things like mathematics and, and so on. And honestly, ideally, we wouldn't do a quarter system because 13 year olds don't really want to spend all morning in one class, that's, I'm not, well, I act 13 and I don't want to be in one class all morning, but you get the idea. There are challenges, what we're looking at here, we have to try and maintain linear prep and other things, and so the model we've been working on is that there is prep every day, however, we're having a little busing challenge as of this evening, so I'm working on that, so we're, I think some people are chatting with the union tomorrow, but we have to work on the bus thing as well, see, there's another thumbs up, it's a thumbs up kind of day. So then going to our two smaller secondary schools. Riverside College is effectively a large number of learning groups, they're very tiny learning groups, so for example, plumbing might be, I'm not sure of the numbers, but let's say 17 in the learning group, right? It's an instructor and the students for that group and they are not interacting really with other groups, they're doing their thing, which is not the same, I hope, as what estheticians are doing or whatever, you get the idea. On the other end of the spectrum is Fraser View Learning Center, which is effectively one learning group. Now, I was just talking with Principal Watson, who may or may not be in the room earlier today, about the idea that to begin with their model will be a reduced number at any given time and seeing how it goes as it develops forward, correct? There we go. Then we got to Mission Secondary, which I already alluded to, which is challenging because of its size and that it's only grades 10 to 12. And what you've done, if you've ever gone to Mission Secondary and looked at the wall in Mr. Pierce's office and it's just a wall of choice and you want to take robotics or genocide studies or, or both, you get the idea. If we don't do a model like what we are going to go ahead with, what you end up doing is telling people you can't take the things you want. So what we're doing is a hybrid model, and so it's semesters, so you're taking four courses at a time, but the students are broken up by alphabet, so for example, A to D on Monday and then the next sort of group on Tuesday and so on through the week. And they will attend class in person, the class will be, I believe, recorded but also broadcast so that the students at home will watch it, the next group comes in the following day and so, so everybody gets time in class, but they also have time working on that same course virtually or remotely or whatever term you want to use. Wednesdays, you're going to have some unusual other sort of outside of the regular timetable courses and so on. And one of the, I guess a couple of benefits of this model, and I'll talk problems in a minute, you have reduced numbers of students in the class, especially the age group that's the closest to being adult, at least physically, anyway. And you're also reducing exposure things by only having, having limited at a time, right? Some of the problems, for those of you who remember the spring, flourished under remote learning and that's a significant concern. Now again, the theory is that you're still getting the class, you're just not there every day, and also because the teachers are there, we can, you know, have you come in for additional support and all those, those kinds of things, and if you have issues with your technology and so on, we're going to have to mitigate for those concerns as well. So just by the way, there's somebody, and I can't do it right now, but you've got your microphone on and maybe you could please mute it, thank you. Anyway, so that's the model of the secondary, and I have to tell you, this was the big, we didn't know, and I've been on the phone with ministry a lot in the last couple days explaining why this was the model we proposed, and again, we did get approval today, but it's interesting though that Chilliwack and us are outliers for opposite reasons, Chilliwack for having 100% attendance but only one class and us down a kind of 35% attendance, but are kind of regular semester thing with the hybrid, so, there you go. We have a distance distributed learning program here called Summit. And we will see an upswing in enrollment this year, that's another prediction. I believe when we checked today, we're running about 200, was that the number, I think, more or less? Right. Now, before you go, okay, 200, yeah, this is inquiries and I know of a number of parents that have made inquiries to multiple DLs and all those kinds of things. And that will not all come to fruition, we may have other people, for example, I had someone contact me who is at the high school level, but when they heard about the sort of hybrid model, they went, oh no, I'm good with that, I'll just stay at the high school. So, that isn't a real number necessarily yet, but it does give you a current scope and scale for it. So now, and the other thing is, we will probably lose students to just straight old homeschooling or DL in another school district, you go to Abbey Virtual or whatever, although interesting, I think you were mentioning, was it 30 out of district inquiries? Okay. Okay. Okay, so somewhere between 30 and 80, there's a nice range, are from out of the district, so that's just interesting information. So it's hard to predict where we end up on enrollment, one day, a week or so ago, when Marchi, the principal at Hattick Middle School is figuring things out, he had 15 walk-ins to register for school, these were not people we expected, so you can see it's really hard to figure out what our enrollment will be, that's 1-5, not 5-0, just to be clear. It's still 15, right? So it's really hard to figure out where we're, where we're going to be. I'm now leading into one of the areas of concern and contention, which has to do with seats or spots or holding or whatever terms you want to use for. So, there's multiple points for the board to consider here. The first one is that for students, well, first of all, for students in general, the school act requires that we provide an educational program to all students that live in Mission, that's our obligation. It doesn't actually define how we do that, so typically that's defined as a quote unquote regular program, until such time as health and safety and a bunch of other things can't be met, and then you can do some other format. Where we're particularly getting concerned is with the programs and schools of choice. So typically speaking, if you have your child in, say, Hillside Traditional Academy or French Immersion or ESR, you're, you're in a spot in that program and if you leave, they can in theory fill that spot with someone else, in the case of ESR and Hillside Traditional. And this is the case because those are not catchment schools, these are programs of choice and they are popular and there are waiting lists and so on. Now, some ramifications to consider is that every time you have an empty seat in a building, you are, and this is, we're going to get into bean counting here and people don't like that, but it's, it's a fact, you're losing over 7,000 and sometimes much more money per spot that's empty. So, you know, if I look at this class right now and I can see that, you know, we've got six or seven empty seats, you know, I can say that we're, we're losing $50,000, $60,000 out of this, this classroom, which is the money that doesn't go to buy resources, pay for staff, put the lights on, whatever. So the argument is you want to fill the seats as much as possible and so on, and/or go the other direction and, and collapse classes and redistribute staff and resources to other places. One counterpoint though to consider is that if you fill a waiting list with other students, most of those students are coming from other Mission schools, so that is a consideration that the student that now can fit into ESR has come from Albert McMahon or wherever it is they've come from. So there is a ripple on effect when you move students around. Nonetheless, the idea is you wanted a program of choice, you are leaving, or sorry, excuse me, a school of choice, you're now leaving the school of choice, other people would like that opportunity, don't they have a right to experience that opportunity? The other one that's further complicated because of an educational matter is the program of choice, Choice French Immersion. If you leave French Immersion, historically speaking, you can't come back, right? The French Immersion starts in the primary, primary years and you, you continue on with it as, as long as you wish or until graduation and that's that, you can't enter into it, if you will, kind of on a whim in grade six or something, something like that, because you're expected to have a certain level of fluency at that age. This is obviously an unusual year and I am meeting with Sean Amiro, our French coordinator on Thursday morning to talk about what are some different possibilities, but you know, you start to talk about things like, can you have an entrance exam for somebody to come back in grade five after missing a year, or what if the parent is fluent in French? And there's a lot of complications, but it's very tricky. So that's a further kind of consideration, and what do we do with spots when people leave? And, and again, if you're holding the spot empty, that is costing money to the district. And yes, if somebody goes to Summit, the district is recouping some money, but not till later when they register through and so on. So that's the sort of fundamental concern around this, and as I put on the, on the page here, we could consider for Hillside and ESR, the idea of a sort of waiting list for people that were there and have left for this year and will return the following year as a possibility. But even that's not perfect, I'm going to use the Board of Education as an example, all the members of the board go to ESR and they all get removed by their parents this year for whatever reasons, and we put them on the waiting list. And just because it's easy for me, Rick was the first person on the waiting list, then Tracy, then Randy, then Shelley, and then Julia, so that's easy to remember. So therefore, when we start next year, the first available spot should go to Rick because he was the first on the list. The catch is Rick is going into grade six and we don't actually have any spaces there, Tracy's going into grade three and we do have space there, so Tracy gets a spot, so Rick is still waiting, the next spot is in grade five and that's where Randy is. So, it's not ever going to be 100% equitable if you do do that, it does give an opportunity for people who leave, as is their choice, to have the possibility of going back, but I am reluctant to say we can guarantee your spot based on that premise, because if we don't have space in grade six, we don't have space, and I know one of the things is, well, just hire more teachers, well, we have a physical limitation on those buildings, they are fairly full. The other one just to mention is with regular catchment enrollment schools, and some of them have space in them, some of them don't have that much. Traditionally speaking, over the last few years, Hattick Elementary School has not had a lot of space, in fact, children arrive in the middle of the year to enroll in, you know, grade four and there are no spaces in grade four because the school is pretty much full. So, if someone was to leave Hattick Elementary this year and then midway through the year decides things look pretty good, COVID's gone away, whatever it is, I'd like to go back, it may be a challenge to even guarantee return with a regular catchment school as well. We don't know, and again, of course, if we have 100 or 200 students go into Summit Learning Center, that does open up spaces, but again, if we have enough spaces empty in any particular school, we're going to look at shifting the teacher resource to other spots or whatever. So, that is a complicated series of issues for the board to consider. You have on the one hand, our obligation is to provide an education, it didn't ever say that it had to be at Hillside Traditional Academy or, or whatever, on the other hand, there are ways we can do it, and I want to go back to funding to mention something from today, which is, we actually had a relatively pleasant meeting with the deputy minister today, which is a strange statement to make in these days, but basically, one of the finance people, Reg Bower, was commenting about, don't forget that even if you lose an enormous amount of students, your funding is locked in and you can't lose more than 1.5% of your funding, so in other words, in this district, after we lose 62 students or whatever, you know, that kind of number, after that, we're not going to lose any more money, they will freeze our funding at that level. So, to take an extreme example, if a thousand students just To take an extreme example, if a thousand students just disappeared and never came to school here or whatever, we're not going to lose. You know, twenty percent of our funding. Okay, just just to be clear on that. So there is the capacity to hold spots if the board wishes to consider that. But all of it does come at a cost. And every time we hold a seat, there's something you're not doing instead. So that's a consideration. Okay. Well, that's going to be hard to read. So we worked on the health and safety over the summer. And we tried to get it down to ten pages because the premise was people weren't reading it. And we got it to eleven pages. And then there's a lot of what if? What if, what if, and what about, can you explain this? And so it's back to twenty seven pages like again, I believe. So. Apologies, but it's that you're trying to balance detail versus readability. And the other thing is, we cannot. We cannot give you all the details of any particular site. And that's why it's really important to talk about for a minute about local health and safety, which is a slide or two from now. But just the idea that what's going to work at Windabank is not necessarily the same thing that will work at Silverdale, just because of how the building is designed, the number of students and so on. So just some broad overall health and safety things from here. Basically, similar to June guidelines, but less intensive. And people saw that and went. Oh, no, you're not taking health and safety seriously. Well, no, it's the reality that what you can do for a few weeks in stage three is different than what you're going to do over a year at stage two. So as an example, the next box over. Regular staff may now use the refrigerator, micro waves and so on. For those of you that were teachers in your schools in June, you may recall. That you probably got sick from a tuna sandwich that you just left in your desk or something like that, because we said no refrigerators, no micros, no, I mean, that sort of stuff. There's a dog in here? That's why Bronwyn shut the door. For those of you on Zoom, for those of you on Zoom, there's a very cute dog in here. It's, it looks like a cross from a cocker spaniel and a poodle, a cockapoo. Welcome to twenty twenty. Okay. Well, I didn't get to pet the puppy. Okay. Believe it or not, there's a puppy that looks sad because they're not in the meeting. So further on, regular staff like today to come in here, you're supposed to have signed in. In case we have an issue, we can contact you all about it. Regular staff, if you are the grade five teacher at your school, you just go into school, but guests, parents, people like me. That are from outside of the school community need to sign in and sign out from the building. But staff still all have to do their daily health check before starting work. And we are going to continue with custodial, excuse me, custodial support. However, I will mention this is an area of challenges retaining staff at this time. Being a custodian is a stressful job, and I want to speak on behalf of support staff generally facilities as well is that people are nervous, people are agitated. And. People are worried and sometimes they take that out and the people that are working the hardest make sure we're safe. And we need to respect that those people are working really hard in challenging situations and so on. And I think for some people that were especially near retirement to go everything thinking. Maybe this isn't worth it. Thank you very much. So it's important that we continue to work on supporting our support staff and retaining more and so on. Let's see what else do we have here? So we did get some additional funds this year. Four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, I think, for cleaning resources and support in that area. And we've been purchasing additional PPE for specific staff. This is things like. Barriers and face shields and so on, but please understand that is only for very specific situations and so on. That's not, not for all of us by any means. The next one is an interesting one. Several weeks ago, I was contemplating masks for teenagers. Because, you know, we have a lot of teenagers and they're the closest to adult age, which is the the most likely to vector COVID. And I thought about, we really should think about having masks for them to wear in the hallways and so on. But the policing of that is very difficult, right? That's a hard thing to enforce. Hands up if you want to be the teacher telling all the kids to wear masks. And then we literally were looking at the kind of quote unquote final version of our health and safety plan. And an hour later, the ministry sent other things saying, well, masks are now mandatory for middle and secondary students. Okay, which helps us a lot then. I mean, it's still going to be a hassle, but at least if this is the message from the provincial health office, the CDC, the government and so on, it does help us with our messaging. And likewise, the same on buses. It's our expectation that all students on a bus will wear a mask. There are, of course, caveats to this. I've talked to a parent of a child with Down syndrome and, you know, the other thing is educators, we have to understand that. Part of their learning plan could be learning how to wear a mask and for how long and so on, because. There are other things that are more significant than COVID. And being a human is part of it. And just as a little personal story, I've been very good with my bubbles and safety and hygiene and everything. And a week or so ago, my brother in law died. We went over to my partner's parents and we hugged them. We have been really good about being apart from them, but some things are more important than COVID. And so that's just one of those things that we all remind ourselves as we're all careful and safe that there's going to be a kid that comes up and hugs you. Please don't yell at them, right? That's part of being an educator and being a human. Anyway, and so that's buses. And you've seen this, and I don't expect anyone to be able to read this, but this is just the hierarchy of controls for communicable diseases. And basically, systems are best and and the least useful is sort of the protective equipment. It's better to be far apart from someone than to be wearing a mask. Right? If you can have the mask and be far apart, that's even better, but you get the idea. Anyway, no need to hover on that. I think a lot of people probably want the very specific information for their school. And the reality is that the local joint health and safety has a lot of power and influence over what's best in that building. And. To talk about that for a minute, I just want to take the example of two similar sized schools, Windabank and Christine Morrison. Both schools shockingly have a secretary. That is the, you know, kind of that main go to point that you go to in a school. In the case of Windabank across the street here, that. Space already has glass all around it. It's actually hard to get to that position in the building and sort of spread your germs and so on. Meanwhile, at Christine Morrison, we have the principal here, I can assure you that you have to go in the building, then enter a room. And then behind a small barrier is a space smaller than whatever bathroom you use today. They sit in, so there isn't really, in my view, adequate spacing for you. So to say have one blanket statement that all all secretarial positions will have plastic glass shielding. Well, that's not necessary. Windabank, they already have glass shielding, so you don't need to do that there. But at Christine Morrison, I would hope assume that that is the case. I've got nodding from Principal Gibson, so thank you. So some trickier details, and this is, I had a conversation with the with the unions about this. A week, two years ago, I can't, it's sort of a blur, but so. Parents are to check their child before they send them to school. We ask if they are sick, please keep them home. When the child arrives in your classroom, you do an assessment as well. And if the kid is coughing and sneezing, I think you can conclude that they are sick and they probably should not be there. There are complications around all this about what's going to be an appropriate isolation room. A lot of rooms are back in use. And there's going to have to be some flexibility. I gave the example that at Albert McMahon, that the vice principal teaches about half the time. So her office can be an isolation room, as long as she's aware of it, by the way. As well. And indeed, if she is in her office, they can still use it as isolation room. She just has to move elsewhere. So that's not going to be the same solution as another school. Another important point, none of us are medical professionals. None of us will be doing temperature checks or whatever. I'm always worried, like, if you go to the pro D about psychiatric disorders, the next day we're all diagnosing each other. And we're not going to be doing any of that stuff. The other point here, and this is, I'll be honest, is a sort of difficult point for me, is that we did have a COVID exposure at Mission Secondary. In your classroom, Mr. McCready, believe you weren't there, of course, but anyway. And we we notified the people who had been in that classroom of that. And my understanding exactly this minute is we're not allowed to do that. And we are trying to talk with Fraser Health tomorrow about this, but it's interesting because I have a view that we want to be as transparent and open as possible. Because it avoids conjecture and conspiracy and all those kinds of things. But I also had, obviously, I have to respect the. The medical health professionals to determine how they're going to do their contacts and so on, if they believe there's been a potential exposure. So details to follow on that, but my understanding of this exact moment is, you know, we discovered there's been the COVID exposure, we contact Fraser Health. And our medical officer makes a determination of what's to happen. It may involve us notifying people, but it might not. So that's just, so we're clear on that particular issue. And that's basically what this slide is about. And and again, this is a difficult one, but it also leads into going back to the beginning of it. Where when a staff member or a student is sent home, that we try and avoid the conjecture that this person is sort of Typhoid Mary or whatever. And. Indeed, in many cases, we'll establish other things. So for example, you may recall in June, we had students that were suffering from hay fever. Once we establish that they're suffering from hay fever, yes, they can come to school because it's hay fever. The end. And yeah, if we keep everyone out that has hay fever, that's not equitable. So that's the thing to bear in mind. So communication, I was asked today what our communication plan is, and I sort of facetiously said lots. We have to be in ongoing contact with our various partner groups, as you see here. And and this involves everything from emails and letters and teams, conferences and so on. And they'll come and go in the amount that we do. For example, with First Nations, one of the questions that was asked in the ministry guidelines was where where are we at with our transportation? Tripart agreement on transportation. And my response was, well, it was really great until COVID hit. And then the bands respectfully asked that we. You know, just stop and work on your other pressing matters of the day. And so the question was, well, when are you going to start again? Well, we're ready to start whenever, but. That's up to them to decide when they're ready to have that discussion as opposed to other other items. And just on for the information, the board and the public here with regards to First Nations. Most First Nations around the province have a deep felt respect for COVID and other similar diseases. And and respectfully are keeping the gates shut, as it were. I know Vivian was in contact with all of the bands recently. And some are basically saying, if parents want to send their children, of course, they can send their children, but as a band, we're not. Not sure the word is promoting that, encouraging that or whatever you want to call it. They're not saying, don't go or anything like that, but just that. That's their stance at this moment. So just so you're aware of that. So that will have a different impact on different buildings for obvious reasons. And some of the communication, for example, the COVID task force back in. Let's say April, that was at least weekly that we were doing that over the summer. It's been every other week. And I did take a week off in the middle of summer. So it's just going to depend on the group. One of the other things is, of course, for individual parents is, in the letters that I've sent home, I do include my email address so they can contact me directly. Sometimes I'm steering them back to a principal or a program or something, but we want to make sure that we have as good a connection there as possible. But it's something to consider is if if the board of first wants more formality and communication plans, that is something the district is working on as well. So finally, so we will put up the current plan and I can just, you know, I can quickly scroll through them on font three or whatever, and everyone can stare at them, but. Please understand that when you see that and you go, this part is stupid or this part doesn't work or whatever. That's okay. Like, we can adjust things and fix things as we go ahead. It's not set in stone. These are living documents. We'll change them as necessary and so on. And the other thing is that. As we take a long view here, the business of the board and thus the school district does have to continue. And so there are other things that once the dust settles from September and we have some idea of what we're doing with enrollment and so on. That we can't just put everything on hold forever. That's the rest of the business of the board. So there. And there's going to be, I know lots of our community for questions and so on from the board and from people here. But again, if there if there's something that doesn't come through, you didn't understand it, or please feel free to email me later on. So thank you, Board Chair. That's the presentation. So. Questions and comments, and I will end the slideshow.
First of all. A comment. I understand current concerns and fears. I don't work full time anymore. I consider myself semi-retired, whatever that means. But I do work in retail. And, you know, for a while, there was only fifty people allowed in and then a hundred people, and then now it's wide open. And I do understand even with employees. Even if they're not articulating it, there's just a little background level of fear and anxiety because people are unsure. And so I just want to acknowledge that that's understandable. I just wanted to mention, I was going through. The B C Center for Disease Disease Control, B C Ministry of both guidance document. Okay, it's all. Which is dividing the guidance for a K to fall sector to minimize the transmission of COVID nineteen. And maintain a self unhealthy school environment for students, families and staff. And the document identifies key infection prevention and control practices to implement. As well as actually take it a student staff number developed symptoms, which we as a district are following and are implementing. And it also sits based on current epidemiology of COVID nineteen in B C. And the fact that children are at a much lower risk of developing and transmitting COVID. K to fall schools in B C. And have all elementary and middle school students and secondary students receive in class instruction within the school environment. While supporting health and safety of children and staff. So I just thought I'd mention that. And the ministry mandated return, you know, ministry has mandated a return to school. Schools are open and, as I said, a controlled environment. As was mentioned before, there's always some risk to anything. But it is a low risk. I might say it is a lower risk even than some work, like people are currently working there. So I just wanted to acknowledge the fear. We talked a little bit about. Schools of choice. About prioritized waiting lists. I looked at it a little differently. I can remember when we implemented those schools of choice. And there were waiting lists that. And people are on those waiting lists.
I'm sorry, Randy, I just had someone message saying that they they're having a hard time.
Okay. I just wanted to talk about schools of choice and and, you know, the idea of a prioritized waiting list. My other concern is is that when these schools were open, there were people on waiting lists or currently on waiting lists. The ministry is mandated to return to school. And if there's a space available, holding the space denies somebody that's on the waiting list. That is sending their child to school, that spot. And my other concern is, we're talking about a year, and hopefully that is only a year. But what happens if it's longer? So there was a lot of thought put into those waiting lists and the procedures around. And I think that they are fair and to. Start tweaking them now for a lot of the concerns that were mentioned. I don't, I don't. I don't think that's necessarily workable or fair to others involved. That some people get priority over somebody that's willing to take it. And and are in place to take it. So that's just another thing that ones of mention. Anyway.
Would you have one to do? I remember first time I went over to visit in Hillside, they have this ninety five people that were on the way. So that's a school of choice. So that's a school of choice that I had to watch them on. So the waitlist, I understand is big vision. But I was listening to the rationale behind French immersion. And if someone goes over French immersion, they can't come back in because there's a lapse in time and the continuity of being in French immersion. So the waitlist for French immersion can only be four, the youngest kids. We can't have a grade five student wanting to be in French immersion. They're smart because they, they may not have any French immersion in their life. So that's just something I want to clarify that if the waitlist is here for
So sorry, we're going to have a bit of a trick here just to, you know, because the people on Zoom can't really hear people. So why I have to, is I sort of have to repeat what you're saying because I can't really move the computer around the room that much. So, so just as Julie was basically commenting on the different programs of choice. And in the case of French immersion, that really waiting lists only work for the entry in and not for the other age groups. Any question involved?
No, I just, I just wanted to make a comment of that if that is true, then they have to start basically with kindergarten or grade one.
Yeah, for clarification with French immersion, there is such a thing as late French immersion in grade six. We do not offer that currently in this school district. We do have intensive core French, which is kind of like more French than a regular student would receive. But less than immersion, obviously. The other issue is can you go and do D L as French immersion? Not admission. I'm actually not aware. I'll be honest. I'm not aware of a program like that, but that doesn't mean it does not exist.
There was one question that I asked about, that a lot of people are asking about floating EA.
Yeah. So a floating EA, first of all, just at the school level, we're trying to structure as many EAs to be locked into a learning group as possible. But a, an EA or indeed for that matter, we have casual EAs. We have teachers on call. We have a bunch of people that are not part of a learning group. So again, in that case, as much as is possible, we want to keep them separate from the, from the learning group. So they need to try and maintain a distance mask and so on. Where we are going to have issues, and this is part of the work that Director Carolyn Schmore is working on is with, for example, a student with very specific needs and so on, and how we support that. Because again, some things are more important than than the COVID bubble in a sense, right? And so what can we do to support that child? So that's a further consideration.
Go ahead, John. So I had a few questions that Angus has already answered some of my questions. Because some of them were about some of learning, what our waitlist was. How many people are, you know, are switching over possibly? So I need sort of touch base on that. Julie just asked my floating EA question and but I was just wondering with the, you know, and Randy spoke really well about the waitlist and we did have discussions a lot about the waitlist. When we started these programs. And that would be sort of my thoughts would be how do we prioritize prioritize one waitlist over another waitlist? And so I don't know whether that we need to have a bigger discussion about that or but that, that will be coming. I have to touch base that we've had, I've had parents, I think we all have parents talking about that. A district on the island has voted and put a motion and then voted to have the spaces saved. They didn't really talk about the ramifications. That wasn't in the discussion, ramifications of what happens with that budget wise. They're kind of leaving it up to senior staff. So I'm not quite sure how that works between board and and just sort of handing it over to senior staff to say, here, we voted on this motion, here you go. So I think with us admission, we're, we're trying to work as best we can with all of us trustees and work with our senior staff to understand what is the best for our students and community. And I, and I know it's a hard decision. And I know it's not going to work for everybody, but my concern is how do we prioritize over one waitlist over another?
So if you couldn't hear Shelley's comments, her concern is how we prioritize one waitlist versus another waitlist and so on.
Just on the isolation rooms. And not sure if I missed something, but from what I was understanding was the the student shows signs or of illness, they would be put to an isolation room. And we, as you said, are challenged for that space. What do you have space for that?
Yes, but again, local committees need to figure out what's the best use of space in their building. And I give the example at Albert McMahon. And I'm not saying that that's the only space they have there. Just give it as an example, there are spaces that could be used that way. And you know, if there's a room that is traditionally used for a certain function, that maybe that's shared with something else and so on. So we need to respect that the local committee is going to decide is the best use of space in that room. This is going to be a challenge. Like in, in, in June, we could have more spaces available than we do now. I'm sorry, I just need to make a comment for, there's a lot of questions coming in on the, on the chat and folks, if you could please stop. A lot of them are the same questions. So just slow down, wait where there's no way we're going to get through them all. So just hold tight and we'll get through them. And so on. Sorry, please continue.
No, thanks. And then so how, how will that be monitored? And, and then I assume the parents would be contacted.
Parents are contacted, yes.
And the goal would be to have the student take it into the necessary medical support somewhere away from the school.
Yeah. Now, just by the way, as you think about how easy it is to be a school principal for a minute. With the issue of children going home and so on, we will have to contend with parents that are reluctant to come pick up their child. We're going to have to deal with not wanting to go through the steps that are necessary and so on. It's not our objective to keep everybody out for, you know, two or three weeks or whatever. But that is going to be some difficult area for people to navigate through at the school level. The, the principal and or vice principal are also responsible for reporting like Johnny is in the office now as of nine thirty, whatever. He's from learning group two and so on and, and doing that part. If it does turn out that they have COVID, then we have to work back through the contact group and see what Fraser Health wants to do with it, right?
And so those plans are, we're working on those plans right now. And mostly this is for clarification.
Yeah.
Then from that, we're challenged for space for those isolation rooms. But what if, or what do we do or have we got a plan so that if those symptoms could show up in the winter with sniffles cold that appears to be that? And we're inundated from learning groups coming from home schools.
Yeah. And so, I mean, if we take a worst case scenario, we have, I don't know, 30 kids get sent to the office at the same time. Okay. I mean, that's part of what you need to think about is, okay, so we're going to have to remove the PE class from the gym. You know, put kids in there and start working on like, that's the new crisis. Now connected this, and this is also part of the questions or comment in the Zoom chat has to do with TTOCs, casual EAs, et cetera, that it is, I predict there will be more utilization of TTOCs and casually EAs and so on this year than usual because we are trying to encourage people, this is going to come around, we're going to encourage people to be sick. If, if you feel sick, you should probably stay home, et cetera. So that's going to be another challenge. And added to that is sometimes historically, when we've been in a bit of a crisis that way, you know, well, you can take those two classes. You know, hey, principal, go cover those two classes, take them to the gym. Well, now I guess you could still do that, but you'd have to physically separate the two classes because they're not part of the same learning group. That sort of thing. So there's a lot of questions and issues around that. And we'll just, we're going to have to see how this is going forward. Again, part of the responsibility is for the community, right? And I know this is trite for me to say, but as, as a parent myself, like if my kid is sick, I also have to be responsible and think about what are the ramifications be sending them to school when they're sick and the hassle and all those kinds of things. So there's no easy part to this and that's just a reality, right?
I actually have a couple of questions here. And first of all, I just want to say a few comments here. I'm not getting coffee game scores or anything. I'm just connecting with our executive assistant who's working remotely about some technical pieces. Okay. Just putting that out there. I do have a couple of questions. I just wanted to confirm. And you did have the hierarchy there. Like we understand that, you know, about B B E, but in terms of some of the environmental protections, like we know the physical distancing is good. And then sort of some of those environmental protections that we're talking about plexiglass and arrows on the floor and those kinds of things. We do have plans to incorporate those, but they'll be more specifically addressed at each site.
Correct. Because saying that all hallways will be one way, just to take an example, ain't going to work at a school with the one hallway, right? Because right. I mean, that's complicated. Anyway, so I, sorry, you've got more questions. Yeah, sorry, keep going.
And what are, do we have, and again, I know this is all going to be site specific, but do we sort of have any general ideas for what could be happening for recess and lunch?
So a few things. As with all my answers, it begins with it depends. So how recess works at Silverdale is different from Albert McMahon. Some of the larger schools have gone with staggered recesses and lunches so that you have a reduced number of students out at any given time. And I haven't actually personally seen the specific plan for, say, Windebank, but the idea is that on a rotating schedule, that this area, the playground is for these learning groups, this area, other areas for these other learning groups and so on. Now, I'm going to be honest and I'm, I predict that Johnny will run over to learning group two, even though he's in learning group one. And my hope is that over time, we learn, no, you're in learning group one, you need to sit out here. It's whatever. It's this week or this Monday or whatever, you're in this area. And, and so on. And I mean, the students themselves usually have a pretty good idea. I'm in Ms. Jenkins' class and, and so on. But yeah, that's, that's sort of probably speaking the issue there. Now, we at the, we were talking today, we had a really good session today with principals and we, I was sitting with the middle and secondary group outside today, and we were talking about things like lunch at the high schools and the middle schools and a bunch of discussion there. First of all, the food that will be provided is going to be much more in the kind of prepackaged or I think I said to someone that was like B C Fairies, I think that was to Marchie that, you know, that, that it's controlled by the two people who work back there. They hand you the food. That's it, right? The cafeterias and lunch areas will have limits, just like we're experiencing here today, right now. So you actually can have more than one learning group or whatever in here. You just have to have been spaced appropriately for the area and there's going to be capacity. So this room is 40. That's how many people could be in this room. Otherwise you're eating somewhere else and so on. That's easier than trying to police that today is, I don't know, learning group one day or something like that in, in the lunchroom. Food will be pre-ordered, et cetera. In the hallways, common rooms, lunch areas, et cetera. If you're not eating, you're wearing a mask because you're not in your classroom, you're not, you're learning. And this also goes to cover a couple of questions in Zoom. To be clear, people within the learning group can be within six feet of each other. It's great if they don't have to be, but they can be within the six feet of each other. And those of us that are not in the learning group need to keep our space and distance and so on. Part of the model that we have for the high school, because there's significantly reduced numbers of kids there at any given time, it should be easier to have that spacing. But again, within your learning group, it's okay to be closer. In our plan currently, the teachers in secondary school are not part of the learning group. Whereas they are in elementary and middle, right? This, the specific teacher. Just for clarification on that. So social distancing or physical distancing is not inside a learning group. It's between learning groups or other staff, such as myself or whatever. Okay. Sorry. Do you have further questions? Okay.
Thank you for that. Oh, have we addressed? I don't know. We've noticed it already. I've noticed it with people sitting in the audience and just some of the banter that we've had back and forth. It's really difficult. And I've had Karen ask me, are we doing anything to address the teachers are, are teaching with masks on? It's going to be really difficult for students to hear. Have you thought about that at all? Yeah, I can't.
So I do know. So a couple of things on that. First of all, I know that Carolyn Schmore has actually ordered the transparent masks because we have students that read lips and that's an issue. That doesn't actually fix sound muffling per se. And it's going to be an interesting one because you know, on the one hand, we have FM systems and so on, and we may need to look at promoting more of that versus what it is that people can hear and the number of students. So for example, it may even be classroom specific because certain rooms carry sound way better than other rooms, different classes, different schools, all those kinds of things. This room I think is relatively good with sound compared to some spaces I've been in. And so there's going to be a bit of unfortunate, I hate to say this, trial and error with that of what's going to work or not work. I would also say in the case of at the high school, for example, if you only have, say, eight students in the class, you can maintain physical distancing. And so you don't have to wear the mask. And a lot of people choose to wear the mask anyway, but there are those other flexibilities or possibilities, right?
And then I go also with the the live streaming of MSS.
Yeah.
What are we doing about privacy concerns and that?
Yeah. So a couple of comments here, and I actually want to go back to one of the problems with the model that we have there. And this is a problem throughout the province with any place doing a hybrid learning model is if you go over to U F V or S F U or any of the universities there, everything's online. Except if you go to U F V Chilliwack because plumbing is hard to do online, right? And so an awareness that applied skills, teachers are facing a particular challenge in that you're not physically in their classroom every day. And so what is it that you're following along with online and so on? So there's, there's a lot of stuff to work out with that because we're not going to have 25 cameras and the cameraman or whatever it is in the, in the classroom. So you have to think about what is the lesson activity that I'm trying to impart about how do you use the lathe or whatever? And and you know, what is realistically feasible for someone to be learning from home, et cetera, when they're not, when they're not there? We have, we do indeed have considerations around what's back and forth information versus you're just watching the video. It's a one-way feed, what's recorded and so on. So we're working through that stuff right now. And it may in fact end up being different between, let's say, social studies and we're working. Right? As different things.
I assumed it was being addressed. I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
And then have we, have we spoken with our local chief medical health officer here like directly or, because I, I've heard that some boards are doing like, you know, forums with, with their local chief medical health officer to answer some of those specific, you know, questions, like, well, why are you doing this? Why are you doing that? Because as you say, we're not medical experts. We are following all the guidelines, but.
Yeah. So several of the Fraser Valley, I think two, maybe three of the Fraser Valley school districts have had some kind of thing and whether it's sort of a Zoom format or a physical format or whatever, they have done something. One might've been just sort of with the board, other ones were public. And so we can attempt to arrange that. I haven't personally talked to a chief medical officer since June. Just, you know, we do have a Skype call or something tomorrow, two o'clock. So that will be an opportunity for me to reach out about that.
Who will lead it? If you want to go ahead and figure out that. That's all. I just wanted to make sure that we are.
It is a potential.
Contact and you are, you've already got a schedule. So I think that's good. And I'm wondering if, because this is one thing that seems to be coming up again and again with the is, is can you explain as you understand it, what the difference is between schools and everywhere else? Because there seems to be a lot of confusion about, well, so you told me I have to stay in, you know, this, but now you can't have parties with different people, but now my kid can be in a cohort of 120 people. And so can you I can take a stab, but I'm actually more, I would prefer to ask you the question.
I prefer you to answer. I would be taking a stab at it too. I, I think, which answer do I want to give? So the question is about, can we explain why school is different from everything else? And the trite answer in a way is because it is. The, I guess a couple of points on it. The first is that the, the medical view is that children are poor vectors of the disease. And yes, I know we can all go find a news article right now on Google about a seven-year-old that caught COVID and all those things. Cause that's the true thing. But relative to adults and of course, the older the adult. the more likely it vectors. So, they view that the, the general guidelines around people kind of nineteen and over are less applicable to children. If we imagine our school as just being full of adults, that's actually an area of consideration. And the older model, that was when they were talking about a limit of this number of people, they were talking a lot about how many adults are physically in the building. So, you know, if, if a building had a limit of fifty adults in it, like, here we are, like, this is kind of, we're, we're getting there just in this one room. But the view is that because children are not very good vectors of COVID, that it's permissible to have them in close quarters, et cetera, because it's difficult for them to transmit it. And if they do get it, they tend to have very mild symptoms, et cetera. And also, the sort of, I guess, the other part that they haven't said in the past apart is the continuation of civilization by educating children, et cetera, et cetera. That's maybe a bit of a stab at the broad picture philosophy. Please do.
Just because this keeps coming up. And so, I kind of, I put, myself, I put a lot of thought into this. And I, what my understanding is based on conversations that I've had is that, and, and stuff that I've been learning is that, one, schools are considered controlled environments, and that it's not different people coming in and out of the building every day.
And that's, that's the learning group part, yeah.
That's the learning group, right? So it's the same. And even if even without learning groups, it's typically the same. It's like a workplace, whereas at grocery stores and other places, there are a lot of different people. Very difficult to. So, this is my understanding. Is that schools tend to be in a more controlled environment? And that's what makes it, that's what people.
Correct. And, and here's just to go further on that. So, again, the learning group isn't about keeping COVID out. It's about sort of keeping it controlled or in. I mean, we don't want COVID in a building, but if it does, that's the thing. So, if this group, if somebody here had COVID, we have the list of people who signed in. We know who's here, we can contact people, et cetera. The number of sixty or one hundred and twenty, it's, in a sense, it's just a number. And one parent had done the math and realized that they had four children. And so, when they start doing math, this child is with this sixty kids, this child with these other sixty, this child's with one hundred and twenty. You're actually dealing with large numbers. And please understand, we do not have control over what it is people choose to do on the weekend, what they do after school, how large their family bubble is, and so on. But within the confines of what we can control, which is kind of eight-thirty till three-thirty or whatever, that we can know that if COVID, if there was a COVID exposure, that we have a kind of controlled information that's this school at this time, here's the people there. And that's why it's also very important that people like myself, who are visiting the school, have signed in and so on. Because if I'm there when the exposure happened, that they know that I was there and so on, right? But yeah, and if you compare it to the grocery store and the flow-through of people are going through the grocery store, that's, I mean, everybody goes to the grocery store. All stop, right? Yeah.
Yeah, and then one thing I actually just heard this afternoon is that, is that schools tend to be a reflection of what's happening in the community, not the opposite. So, schools tend to be, and it's based on community, my understanding, again, this, I'm not a medical, but this, the reason why I want to talk about this is because it seems to be such a big concern. Why is it different? And, but that, it has a lot to do with community outbreaks. And then we see we have very, very low community outbreaks. The numbers, like, we think and trace them, where they're coming from. They're not, it's not just coming from all over the place. It's coming from sort of very specific clusters and different things like that. So it's not sort of rampant all over the community. But I just thought it was an interesting way to look at that schools are actually a reflection of what's happening in the community. So if you look at places like the United States, where we look at what's happening in their communities, it's most surprised that what's happening. So it's just that, I'm just trying to put a little bit of my understanding on it. I'm not saying anyone has to agree with it, but just in terms of why we're doing some of the things that we're doing. I have Shelley and then Randy on the list of questions.
Just two questions, because I'll re-answer them. Just getting back to the community is, it would seem like our indigenous liaison supporters, any of those ones that are supporting our local students or, or any of that, like, is that the same? Like, the process is the same for them or not?
Correct. So, question, the question for you on Zoom has to do with, for example, indigenous liaison worker. And yeah, that's another example, somebody who's sort of outside of the learning group or bubble. But we have a further issue and concern or consideration there, which is, we have multiple workers working in a relatively small space. So we have to mitigate for that. And whether that's find a new space, which is pretty challenging in most schools, or create physical barriers and so on. Those are further considerations to ensure their safety between each other because they're not really a learning group or something like that, right?
And just, I sort of briefly saw the news yesterday. Something to do about team sports or sports. Have you heard anything about how that's going to affect our?
Sports. So the question is about sports. And yes, sports are absolutely impacted by this. So, to be clear, overall, the things that children do at school can continue, whether it's music or sports and so on. However, not the way that people necessarily remember it. I wouldn't recommend sharing recorders. But the case of sports is a really good example. So, if we're all a learning group, we can go out there and play soccer together. We should probably not play tackle football, though, especially because Kevin Watson would win. But there's obviously contact considerations there. If, however, this is more than one learning group, we can't play sports together because there's, there's a risk there. So, what this means is, we will not be having sports between schools, sports between districts, and so on. We continue to have sport, but it's going to be different from other years. This is, we're, we're not going to manage to have, I don't know, the Stanley Cups, with it happening in Edmonton or whatever it is. And, you know, like, that's not happening for us. So, there will not be provincial championships, et cetera, et cetera, unless there's a radical change in COVID in the near future, right?
Randy? Actually, I'm just going to finish with the board first. And then because of the number of stuff that we have happening on, online, as well as the number of differences, just with this one, I do appreciate what you're saying. But I just want to get the board settled with some questions, and then we're going to move on. This is the last person on the speakers list with the board. Go ahead, Randy.
No, thank you. Similar to the risks concerned about isolation and stuff like that, but mine is sort of from the other side, where we all protect each other. And I noticed on the, the guidelines that it said, parents and caregivers must assess their child daily for symptoms of cold, flu, influenza, or COVID-19 prior to entering a school. And I know employees should be self-assessing themselves so they're not going to. So, my question is, I've put that out there, and I know, I think there's a form on one of the appendixes as well. But how are we ensuring that that's done? And are we requiring a form every day? You know, because some of that might prevent a child from being at school, and then all of a sudden, oh, they're, they're symptomatic because they were already assessed before they went to school. So, and I'm not saying that that's our role to be the health police or something. But, you know, they're saying that, you know, parents and caregivers have a duty to the community as well. So, that's just.
Right. So, just the question is about the checking for students and staff. In the case of students, it is more challenging. We can't realistically verify six thousand students, you know, in the twenty minutes before they come to school. But that's the role of the staff in the school, too, is the kid arrives and is oozing from the eyeballs or whatever. And that's where we go, okay, this kid needs to go get isolated. In the case of staff, we have, we basically have an app that we say, I feel okay, I'm at school, away we go. Now, I probably shouldn't mention that we discovered, I probably shouldn't mention this, but I'll mention it anyway, that senior staff actually were reporting to no one. So, actually, I could have reported that I had COVID and no one would have known. So that's just a very small group of five people. But everybody else, there was somebody checking in on it or whatever, if they didn't, didn't fill it in. But we have rectified that, haven't we? Yeah, okay, just checking. Okay.
Great. So I think what we'll do with the speakers list, because we have people online asking questions and we have people here that want to ask questions. I think we should alternate between online questions and in audience questions, if that works. And so, I know that there is one there. So we want to start with that. And then you guys can start putting your hand up while I write on the list. We're here. You guys go ahead and ask the question, and I'll, I'll keep track of the. No, no, we're ready to do the online first. I'm just keeping the list of, I'm, your first part being person questions. Sorry, bear with us. Like I said, this is the, this is our time source.
So, our first question online has to do with why not Suri's model for the secondary school? So, we did, we were exploring a model that was a little bit more similar to the Suri model. And one of the fundamental things with the Suri model is that basically, kids go in the morning and then go home for the afternoon to, uh, remote learning. We could do that here, and it would cost about four hundred thousand dollars because we'd have to add noon hour or whatever time it is busing. So that's a considerable additional cost. So that was a considerable impediment to that model. The other thing is, please be aware that the schools in Suri, this is going to sound weird, the schools in Suri are smaller in that they have fewer kids in a particular grade, which creates part of the electric crunch. If you had a school, a typical high school is eight hundred kids, eight to twelve, you're actually dealing with smaller cohorts or whatever terms you want to use in any particular grade. And that was part of the rationale. But we did look at a model that was similar to that. And the fundamental problem has to do with, as a semi-rural district, is our busing issues. So, your first question from this group.
I got, go ahead, I've got Ryan.
Ryan?
The current policy comes down from the, beyond that.
Do you actually, do mine, can you turn, can you pull your mask back while we see this? I can't hear you.
The current policy on masking on the news is we have people wearing masks when they're in common areas or hallways. However, words of a very wise man, distance and masks is even better. Pretend to go six minutes ago. In this era of that, would the trustee be willing to consider a policy wearing all adult, if you're a guest, or requiring to wear masks, just like if I went into Walmart? Unless I do that.
Go ahead, Julie.
I would continue to support the mask with the credits. Some, I don't know, you know, if I were to say, well, you know, as we have been saying, they, we were clearly, um,
Julia, again, you're there having a hard time here.
So, trustee has supported Ryan's idea that all adults in the building wear masks.
Any other trustees on the train on that? Go ahead, Randy.
I'm not, I'm not in opposition to that. I just like to reiterate that when you're wearing a mask, you're protecting others from yourself. And it's not a protection for you if others aren't wearing a mask. And, you know, if you're physically distanced, if you're in an area where you're physically, physical distancing is happening and you're not compromised, you're probably okay not wearing a mask at that time. And so, you know, having people realize, I'm going in a situation where I'm not going to have that distance, so I'm going to put on my mask compared to wearing it all the time. Because I can tell you, I wear a mask at work all the time. I never knew this until I wore glasses. I can't even see out of the mask for a while because I'm looking through fog and everything else. I mean, there's little things about masks. So if you get to have a respite for ten minutes because you're in the middle of the gym and there's nobody near you, that's it. But I don't really have a problem with having a policy requiring adults to wear a mask in the school buildings. I mean, I can say at work, I've put in a note for the health and safety. I thought the same thing for everybody because there's no requirement like Walmart about for adults to be wearing masks. So, people, I will say, people really try to maintain their distancing as a whole. I mean, you can see when somebody gets in the spot and they go, oh, I'm sorry. And they're trying to maintain their distancing. So, most people are really good at trying to do that now. But if it makes people feel less anxiety and less fearful for that, I, I can support it. I'm just trying to give some dynamics to it. And, you know, if you have physical distancing, I'm okay with it.
So, now we go to the next question online.
So, we already covered the applied skills concern and issue. What about teachers' medical issues? Will there be accommodations? So the accommodations thing is same as it has been. It is interesting, though, just to note on this is, equity is important, but the targets sort of keep moving. If you compare April to June, those are different situations. September is different again as to what the expectations are for the ministry about, excuse me, about face-to-face teaching and so on. So, it's the same process as always, and we'll work through it and, and so on. But just today, I was overhearing a conversation with a couple of senior staff about trying to work out an accommodation for a staff member based on, you know, if you will, old medical information, how we can make that work in the new scenario, right? So, yes, accommodation exists.
Amber?
I have any questions? Not a lot to ask. So, I hope to, I'll never look back. You had a COVID task force. Is that a local COVID task force? Who's on that? Does it exist there? Who's on that task force?
It is represented as, if you will, from every kind of public sector organization in Mission. So it's everything from First Nations to ambulance service to RCMP, fire department, district or city of Mission, but like Public Works and, you know, all those different subdivisions.
So it's not a school?
No, it's not. I'm, I'm the only school district person on it, right?
No, also, in this document, it's, we talk about how each school is supposed to have like a district, so it has school nurses or a, we have one of those.
We don't have school nurses, no. And in fact, I.
It's in, it was in the original instructions we wrote in that last year. Dr. Bonnie referenced it on TV about how there's going to be school nurse or a, a medical officer.
Okay, there's, there's a definition thing here. There's two different things going on. Okay, there's, there's a definition thing here, there's two different things going on and like, I, I think nineteen seventy-five called and wants the terminology back, but there, there's two different things. Fraser Health has a nurse that interacts with the school district, but they are not coming around taking temperature of kids or whatever, they're here to talk about healthy eating. Right, that kind of thing. And then we have a medical officer, okay? And the medical officers, they, you know, there's a COVID issue, we have to do this, that or the other thing. But yes, but those are further, when, when I say school nurse, I'm thinking of something from back when I was a kid, right? Which, right, so just to be clear, because I, I, I'm uncomfortable with the term because it connotes something totally different. Yes, we have a medical officer.
And then my last question really is about, and I'll put myself back. So in your thing, you said that although I'm not, I'm assuming it's all features, that we're supposed to assess the health of our students via a checklist.
Yeah.
So is this the same checklist that we did in June?
So this, the idea is, and this is a discussion we had with the union, is that um, as the kids effectively, when you, you've done the attendance for your class, if Ryan is sniffling and sneezing and coughing, that sounds like he might have a medical issue and you should report it to the office, right? It's not like, let's take his temperature and all those kinds of things.
In June, our checklist have three or four questions and we have to ask each student
Yeah.
individually. Now I have six of them. So I ask each kid that time, but if I'm going to have twenty,
Yeah.
That takes a significant amount of time.
I, and I have to beg forgiveness on where we're at with what the checklist looks like, but basically it's just a have you looked at the student and if they don't look well, then you want to talk to them, say what's going on? You know, if they're looking queasy, that's different than if they got runny nose, et cetera. Right, but
I would just, I would ask that when you say that we are not medical professionals, we're not taking temperatures.
Yeah.
You're asking me to assess a student and I think you're, you're making me mad.
No, I'm not Amber, and that's not realistic, because here's, no, no.
So that's still
Amber, common sense. And I have had this conversation with the MTU, to be clear, and QB. But the point is, I'm not asking you to diagnose this person has COVID, this person has, I don't know, common cold or whatever, but if someone looks unwell in your class, that you check in with them, hey Johnny, what's going on, how are you, stomach ache, whatever? And then it's send them down to the office, right? And that process is going to be a little different between schools, depending on the size of the school, but that we don't want them sitting in your class, because what I don't want is a teacher going, I'm not a medical professional, therefore I will not diagnose a child in my class who has stuff oozing from their eyeballs. I don't want you to tell me what their disease is, I want you to think, I think this person potentially is ill and should probably go home, right? That's, that seems like a reasonable thing to ask.
Now we go back online.
Okay. How is the remote option for immune compromised children working? So again, um, if, if uh parents or whatever feel it's unsafe for a child to attend school, um, in Mission, we offer Summit Learning Center, there are other similar organizations, entities, for example, Ivy Virtual and so on. Um, and uh, in the case of um, the high school, it is a sort of a hybrid model, so some parents may feel that is an acceptable amount of physical time in the school and so on.
I have Sonia. So I'm just middle school, but I'm going to ask, I just like myself. That's my first question, based on how I think that they want to explain the best. At the beginning of this year, we're mostly waiting to be able to find out our numbers. So that we know, know our losing a teacher. And so many years, you know, I've, I've been sitting, so we have my residency and we don't know. Oh no, all around the media class, we only have twenty-three children, which is lovely, but they end up getting rid of the teacher and then forced transfer. And we said that we are, we're guaranteed to turn it on money as the one hundred percent. Does not go for staff, but we have only sixty percent of our parents. Seven of them fifth in September, and by September thirty, I feel like people wait for their membership. If our numbers are great, and we got fifteen kids per class and we can all socially distance, it's wonderful. Are we to assume that we are still going to lose, you know, five divisions, so we can have one in the classroom? Not that we're doing that, but I didn't necessarily have to have that. That's my first question.
Do you have a, like, nice easy question instead? So, so the question. Okay, but well, let's do the hard one first then. So for the benefit of people on Zoom, the question was basically, what if we're at sort of sixty percent enrollment? Are we still looking at reducing, uh, removing classes and those kinds of things? And it's a really tricky question, it's always hard every September as we figure out, holy smokes, um, I don't know, West Heights has really small class size, we could probably go down a class there, but holy smokes, Windebank needs an extra teacher because it's just bursting with goals. So um, you know, it's, to be clear, it's not about layoffs, it's about moving of resources, right? Um, and under normal circumstances, which I don't know if anyone notices, these aren't, it's, it's, it's a tumultuous couple of weeks there as we sort things out and go, you know, I'm really sorry, I think we're going to have to rejig this a bit here and so on. This year is really a bit of an unknown and prior to a couple hours ago, I would have just said, you're going to be in some trouble, right? If you end up with your classes of fifteen, right? However, watching somebody write down the wise words of the superintendent. However, I would say that this year it sounds like there's a bit of a wait and see from the ministry where they said, look, like, so our district's kind of a sixty-five million dollar district, let's call that number, that look, you might go down to sixty-three million, but you're going to not be in a complete disaster. We still have lost two million dollars out of that, which is still a problem and I don't have it, do you have it? You know, so there'll have to be some kind of adjustments and so on, but it might not be as catastrophic as everybody goes back to classes of thirty and, you know, that, that kind of thing. So I, I, I guess I don't really have quite the answer for you. Yeah, we'll still have to look at redistributing resources, because the other part that's interesting is, what if one school has, has the little classes and the school down the road has the bigger classes, like, how is that fair and what can we do about that and so on? But we, it's, there's going to be a bit of waiting to see the whites of their eyes. The other thing is, I know for a fact, we have parents that are also waiting and seeing. They're looking at, I mean, let's look at the COVID numbers, COVID numbers are down to ten or whatever a day and now we're at kind of eighty-five or ninety and that they're worried about that, which is rightfully so. But at the same time, I mean, on the ministry meeting day, they were saying, you know, it's, it's one in four hundred thousand people or whatever the number is, I, I can't remember, but it, it's some astronomical number of how many people actually currently have COVID. And uh, you know, things sort of seem normal, they send their kids back to school. Well, what happens when they start sending them back in October fifteenth? Uh, and indeed, for that matter, what if things are great and we had two hundred kids at Summit and October fifteenth they go, this really isn't for me, I, I thought this was going to be great, but actually it's a hassle, I need them to go back to school and so on, so that's uh, there's a lot of unknown there. So I guess the pat answer is, there will still be shifts, but it won't be as catastrophic as it might potentially could have been. Yeah.
Have you already, we're looking at sending out a survey as soon as we're done to find out what kind of people have now been having a child.
So um, we did one at the end of June, which by the way, the ultimate response was, good luck to you, was sort of and I, and I, the board can tell me to do something else, but actually the, I thought about it, but the view is instead, we're having the individual school reach out to their parent community. Yes.
There, there, we, there may be an announcement coming from the ministry that this, that we have to
Oh. That's news since two thirty?
There, there's, there's, I'm just saying that there are, this is, this is what's happening, because there's different things, different things happening. It's changing extremely rapidly. And um, there, there may or may not be something coming from the ministry about whether or not we can do that. But if you want to continue, like, so we, you had originally decided that
Yeah, originally, no, yeah. But if the ministry says something else?
Who knows, like, whether it is a survey, whether it is people talking to, you know, principals talking to what happened, but I'm, I'm guessing there may be some kind of
I further, I want to make a comment and this goes to some of the stuff on the chat room here and, and broadly speaking, things I've talked to the principals. As a superintendent, a frustration I have had is that the ministry has said, we want consistency, but we don't want to be prescriptive. And the problem with that is, you can have one or the other. And then I find in turn, because the cycle of abuse must continue, I've done the same thing to the schools, right? And this is the issue around consistency around health and safety and so on, is I said, for obvious reason, but you've got to figure out your stuff at your school, but then we've got to look back and go, well, hold on, at, at Windebank, they've got this great system and that Mission Central, they're using a trapeze artist to move kids around, like, so it's tricky, so something's going to come from the ministry saying, please survey parents. And then we're going to get into a definition of what that means, I mean, we can, we can absolutely send a survey out. But if they, if they want to ask the question, could they tell us what the questions are? Because there's a difference between, um, hey, are you looking forward to going back to school? Versus, you're not actually sending your child back to school, are you? I mean, you know, so I guess it'll be, see what's going to come from them, right?
Um, okay, thank you. Now we go back to question online.
Okay, um, so staff member gets a cold, et cetera, can they come back in under ten days? And yes, in theory, they can come back in under ten days, depending on the symptoms and of course, if the doctor says, yeah, you've got athlete's foot, go back to school.
Sure. Okay, I have two things, I just wanted to clarify that I didn't represent the impact of Jared, but I have questions. More than all of the impact that's been coming in. Number one, I just want to clarify is um, the ministry's last guideline that came up did say students who are immune compromised shouldn't have an adult learning plan and be provided with an educational program by their district.
Yes.
So from us that I'm interested in, that you're just guaranteed that they will have the summit available to them? That's the way the building is getting at? It's not done in the other schools anymore?
Uh, correct, I, I mean, you know, so there's a couple of comments to make, the first one is, um, Summit will have to expand this year. Um, there is a question around how much expansion and how quickly. Um, and this is part of the, let's see who's all really showing up and so on. Um, and the other thing is that, um, you know, as much as we've talked about, like, well, we're not holding seats and all that kind of stuff. I mean, we have to recognize it's an unusual year. And that it's my hope that we continue to have liaison between, excuse me, the school and the other school and, and the student. And there's also people that have worked out their own um, compromise, so with middle and secondary students where they're doing both. They're doing uh electives at school and uh core courses at home or whatever, with a view that while there's a immunity issue, that it's, it's being mitigated by only being there thirty percent of the time or something like that, right? Um, but yeah, I would say at this point, right now, um, that it would be through the DL program. Now, having said that, it's also notable that the original messaging from the ministry was very strong that it's all about face to face education. And as we've gone through the last few weeks, we've heard little breaks in that, and you know, once I saw that Surrey had their proposal for a model and and we also had, um, what do you call it? Um, uh, the word hybrid come out of the premier's uh voice or mouth or whatever, um, that clearly there's an allowance for some kind of modifications at the secondary school. They haven't gone there with elementary at this point, but who knows?
And I want to think is, um, hours. Nobody mentioned, they wish they had been outside, you had supervisors, they couldn't bring masks, so they're going to be in a learning group in area.
So a new now supervisor would be outside of a learning group. Um, and um, uh, further, just a sort of side complication to this is, that's a difficult role because you don't have a huge relationship with children. And um, you suddenly are supposed to try and figure out that this is learning group one and this is learning group two. And um, I, I think about, again, I was mentioning about online learning for universities and it's difficult to start with no relationship with people. And now you're also wearing a mask, that's going to be very challenging. But yes, they, they will be operating outside of the learning groups and doing their new nurse supervision.
Uh, so we can go back to online.
Okay. Oh, sorry, and so for the online, so the question there was um, about wh- what's the deal with new now supervisors and um, do they have to wear a mask or they sort of part of, just connected to a particular learning group? And just by the way, as a side note, at, say, Silverdale, they would be part of the learning group, because there they are. Okay, um, then that one, um, discussion around how IP process carried out, how else, you know, the staff be part of learning groups. So again, they're not part of the learning group. Um, those of us who are in any kind of external role, like, I, I want people to think outside of the classroom teacher or potentially the EA in the class, other adults are typically not part of the learning group. We had one at the back waving her hand, there you go. But when I say you're not part of a learning group, doesn't mean you can't learn. So there you go.
In the power meeting, uh, my last question was, um, how, I believe, does staff be oriented on, um, and I thought TTOC, how they, how they will get oriented, has there been progress in the past months?
Uh, progress in semi-plan, how's that for an answer? So the question for those of you on Zoom is, what about teachers on call and how are they getting health and safety orientation? So um, the last proposal I checked in, I think you were part of that, but I'm pointing at our Secretary Treasurer, was the idea of having two half-day things, so you, you don't, you only need to come to one, but we'll offer it twice because the irony is that you might be at your health and safety meeting in Maple Ridge. But of course, one of the caveats there is that their orientation will be understandably somewhat more generic than yours at Mission Secondary or whatever, and still the emphasis that you need to be aware that there may be specific considerations or rules at your site. And I believe we were going to pay them to do that.
Yeah. Conversation to cut to now is that all casual employees will talk in the first week, school or the
So if you can't hear, that's Secretary Treasurer confirming that casual employees will be brought in on uh one of the two days in the, the Tuesday, Wednesday of the first week for orientation.
And we go to online.
Yeah, so this is the, and this has sort of been alluded to already about sick days and um, uh, will we have TTOC coverage to accommodate this? As you probably are aware, TTOC coverage is a challenge mission at the best of times and this is going to continue to be a challenge. Um, and we have, we have hired TTOCs, but first people have also left the profession and all those kinds of things. Um, we're going to have to see how it goes, but um, we are continuing to hire, as I understand it, and yeah, that's obviously a huge consideration, it's not just teachers on call, it's all our other employee groups as well, getting coverage. Um, however, um, we'll see as things go forward, if we, if we've got enough and um, we're still working on it.
Okay. Um, so I would just like to discuss the running suggestion and proposal or request that we may not consider a proposal of those who are required to wear a mask on. Um, if that is something that we would consider, I would just sort of infer a request to maybe clarify that that wouldn't be maybe during instruction. Maybe that's a teacher's choice or against the whole sense in that in their particular environment. But just to be clear that it's not a requirement during instruction, because for me too, it's rare to hear um, when there is a mask on, and so it's an additional challenge to our student. Um, so if it comes for it, I just would worry that some of us might be mandatory, we have to have on during instruction. So if it comes to be considered, to be clear that
So first of all, for those of you on Zoom, the comment had to do with masks for adults in the building. And basically, uh, consideration around, especially if you are instructing that you don't, you know, if we make it mandatory, that then you don't have to wear it while you're instructing, because of course, it's harder to hear when the mask is covering and so on. Um, there's two work, workarounds, and if, you know, for example, I have my mask here, I wear it when I'm in hallways and so on, but because I'm doing a lot of speaking right now, it doesn't make sense to have it on and I'm far enough away from people. Um, one consideration is that that mask rule could simply be for visitors. So me, um, a parent and so on, and not for the teachers in the learning group. That's one kind of easy roundabout on that. And the second one is, again, is that thing of the, the professional teacher in the classroom can make a decision about what's best in that classroom. And remember that in the typical elementary classroom especially, the teacher is part of the learning group, so good point.
Online.
Online. Is all in procedure will take place, staff student is ill, or, okay, we've talked about this, I think, to a great extent already. Uh, do the rest of people have been in contact, continue to go to class? Yes, they do, so um, again, because the vast majority of people who are sick are probably just have a cold or something like that. So we don't close down the classroom because somebody was sent home with a sniffle. If of course, it turns out the person does have COVID, then we have the contact tracing for that room.
Yeah, we're still working on that, those kind of specifics, but following
Right.
bases. Um, did you, you had your hand up, right, yes, you, sorry, yeah, yeah.
So I would be concerned, and I have heard, you're in a lot of the now, the one, I've been in lots of two hundred, I would be surprised, you know, if I'm three people first who's teaching like that, I'd say, I'd keep practicing, and also Sandra's position of practice, and I was feeling all the new compromise, I'll teach, I would be focused, but it's now, I, I personally wouldn't want to get held in October while I'm stinking and setting where that was, and like the old task force, and there's no language that is permitted. So like in a classroom, you need to kind of connect with the language, oppositions to bring on. And it's like this year, it seems like people are clearly aware of it, it's going to be, it's going to be the solution. Even if they're, they're going to test it out, I mean, for a month or two, but then I don't want to be overloaded and then expressed and and there, there's also many that's actually agreeing on this, this is a program too, so.
So this, this, for the Zoom people, question from a DL teacher about how are they going to get supported? If we're going to have massive increase in DL, what are we doing for them and how's it going to work realistically? Because you can't just take any old teacher. I mean, I'm a teacher, I couldn't just suddenly go start working in Summit tomorrow without any help, et cetera, et cetera. So that is a consideration, so a couple of things on this, the first one is the most of the growth, just so you know, is in the elementary, not in the secondary, there will be some, for sure, but like, based on what we are seeing, the data we're seeing right now, it's mostly K to seven, roughly speaking. Um, and so uh, we've talked with HR about increasing the numbers there uh of staffing. However, the, I don't know what the term is, onboarding or whatever you want to call it, is going to take time. So part of the thing is with all the new parents and the ones that be, the communicating with me, I have explained that, just so you know, you know, yeah, we're opening for business kind of on the thirty-first of August or whatever it is, but do not expect a work package the next day or whatever, it's going to take time to put people in and we also really want to make sure so. Because the other fear we have, in a sense, from a kind of money grubbing bean counter point of view is, we hired twenty more teachers for Summit and then on October thirtieth, a bunch of them go, uh, we, we, your parents or students were, we don't really like this, we want to go back to a regular school. Well, you know, now what, right? So we need to do it in a graduated process, because frankly, even if we did hire a bunch of teachers and just threw them at you, that's not actually helpful for you either, because then you're spending all your time training this person, et cetera, so it's got to be a kind of graduated process. Um, as I say, though, most of it is, currently anyway, seems to be at the elementary level, right? But um, yeah, we're, we're very aware this is going to be a challenge and the reality is, yes, we could hire thirty teachers tomorrow or move thirty teachers over from regular classes or whatever to do it, but that's not helping the students or the people that are already working there. Okay. How many learning groups at MSS? Now, to my math, and I could be wrong. Now to my math, and I could be wrong, but I would say that's 15 learning groups. Basically, three groups of 110 a day, I think. Okay, that's, that's the question.
So I have two questions. The first one is specific to, okay, some tests positive COVID and what requires self-isolate. Parents can be at home, I do have some questions about what kind of, what do we provide to students at our home? But more specifically, we can have, are those symptoms that are supposed to be used for those teachers? I have been forced to self-isolate because of something that happened at work. I know work state hasn't really stepped into this, so the question is how can we cover those states?
So for those who couldn't hear, it's sort of a two parter, very cleverly done by Janice about, well done. As one question about COVID. So the first is if a student has COVID, what are the obligations to provide work to them, et cetera? And then the other half of it is if, and this is actually a question that's online as well. If I'm home with COVID, do I use sick days? And so. Oh, okay, so just. Okay. Corinne is going to answer this one and then I'll report it back to Zoom. So the answer is. The, so the question has to do with you, you were exposed to COVID, we've made you stay home, are you using sick days? And so the answer is BCPC is aware of it and we're expecting a response back from them in the next quote, couple of days. Whatever that means, yes. I can neither confirm nor deny that, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. And so the other part, so I would say as far as, so just like, you're not talking like one kid is homesick, you're talking the whole class went home? Okay. Yeah, with the whole class go home. So it's a good question. And my, yeah, but my short, thank you for the clarification, my short answer is probably not in that based on the experiences back in March. And maybe things have changed, but every time Fraser Health had a COVID exposure in Maple Ridge in the high schools on, they didn't do that because they did do some testing of particular people, but to be blunt, they're not really. The exposure isn't just that you're close to someone, it's also time, it's kind of like radioactivity. And so the fact that like, to take the high school example, in the high school, there's, you know, 15 kids in the class or whatever it was, and only for an hour with the teacher and the teacher was standing over here, they seemed less concerned about that. Now conversely, if it's a kindergarten class with everybody kind of, I don't know, rolling around on the ground, it might be a different impact. So it, that's the nod of yes, that is true. When I was kid, teaching kindergarten, I was rolling around on the ground. Anyway, so there's kind of somewhat different answers to that. And so first of all, if the one kid goes home with COVID and has to stay there, I guess the response there is the same as the kid broke their leg or whatever, is that we try and make some work practices and so on. This goes into, oh, sorry, go ahead. Yeah. But so here's an interesting point, though, just as the example, if the health authority decides everybody needs to go home, I certainly couldn't expect the teacher to be on sick leave if we're also expecting them to teach remotely or something like that. So it does depend a bit on the situation, but that would be a consideration if we have a whole learning group end up at home, right?
One of the question was some, just requesting a confirmation, what I'm assuming to true, based on what Ryan is saying and that they're saying. Teaching is going to look different. If we are going to take our masks off and for class, I want to be distance for my class, it's going to be much more of a standard deliverer kind of model, especially at the high school.
Especially at MSS.
So my request is for confirmation of the fact that we will not have teacher nominations.
So a couple of comments on this. The first is, and so the comment had to do with a lot more standard deliver and so on. And I would say that this is actually a concern I have with the mission secondary model is it forces you into stage on the stage. And indeed, all of this stuff does to some extent, because you are wanting to keep kids kind of away from you and so on. So that's the reality. As far as evaluation, I'll be honest, I actually hadn't thought about it. And that's a good conversation of the M2 to have with us because we also have the people who, you know, want the evaluation done. I am a strong proponent, as you know, of the growth plan model. So I am absolutely thrilled if teachers would consider doing the growth plan model for their own self-assessment. So there. See, Ryan, two of us can play that game. Okay, thank you. Online, will classroom teachers be supplied to handle thermometers? No, we will not be using thermometers, that's not our role. And we're going to keep doctors from having slide rules. Okay, okay, are you at the end of your thing? Does anyone can keep, this is. Okay, so this is about the learning groups and is there a way that we could school at home and support teachers? We did March through June. So the short answer is basically currently now, no, the ministry has directed us to emphasize face-to-face education. And of course, if COVID numbers change or anything, we will take our direction from the provincial health officer and the Ministry of Education, et cetera, about you're moving back to stage three and so on. So if that's the case, you know, an interesting aside is I'm not sure what their analysis will be. Because as mentioned, you know, we're back up to kind of 90s of numbers of infections a day. But conversely, the morbidity rate is very low currently, so I, I don't have an answer for that.
Ryan, then who else did I have here?
A local question, the trustees, we've got directions from the Ministry of Education that go down to a district level plan. Are the trustees satisfied that the plan has for ministry's standard for students and staff?
Yes, I am.
So for the people on, online, the question is, are the trustees satisfied that the, the sort of directive plan from the Ministry of Education will keep staff and students safe?
I think that the plan in place and the processes and protocols in place minimize the risk. And that's all anyone can ask at this time.
Anyone else want to chime in?
And we have to be flexible with our plan, as we find that things are changing and we have to respond with them. Completely important, so let's start somewhere.
Yeah, I understand as, as I think the rest of us, it's, the plan is there, it's a good start. It's a fluid situation, so we will, you know, the trustees and senior staff definitely. And you guys as well, the unions, keep us on our toes about changing.
Go back online.
And I'm, I'm a little long tonight. I was probably the hardest one to sell with this. I, you know, I have concerns, but, but I will say that I believe every effort has been put in motion to do the best I can possibly be done. And there's also an absolute recognition that it's, that, that as we move forward, we will find, we will find holes, we will find challenges and we'll all work together to find ways to make that better, to plug those holes, I mean, make it better and safer for courses and give teachers and staff better airtime. I, I'm not going to put myself in a place and say I feel absolutely comfortable, we're moving back into the right place because that's absolutely fine. And that's one factor that I'm able to. But, but I do feel that, that every effort has been put in place and they're working with it and I support the plan as well.
I just want to clarify too, that I, I support the plan as both a trustee and as a parent. I have a child that is returning to school and so with both hats, I, I support that as well as friend and sibling of teachers and others.
And I have a grandchild that's starting back in the system.
Yeah. Okay, I think we go online.
Okay, so the next one is how many contacts per day a senior teacher is likely to have of students? I assume we're talking about senior secondary as opposed to an elderly teacher. No, so first of all, the learning group, any particular learning group, we have approximately 110 students at Mission Secondary, but you would be looking at approximately 25 students in a day as a quote unquote typical teacher now. So all kinds of different exceptions and somebody isn't just a social studies teacher, there also being this other program and so on. But again, you're taking your class and you're breaking it into three or four parts. That's how many students are there on any given time in the senior secondary and that's only MSS, that's not at other things. If you were at Fraser View Learning Center, your class is going to be what your class is. And those are of course typically smaller classes. And at Riverside College, it's whatever that program is, which is typically 12 to 23 people in your learning group. Sure. And I also see Jaclyn has her hand up, we'll get to that eventually. We've answered, we've answered that one, social studies, we've answered that one. Yeah, a lot of discretion. Now, yeah, this is one we sort of mentioned, but I just mentioned again, so to be clear, the local health and safety committee determines things in their school and what's going to work and feasible and so on. We're still going, we're still going to be looking at all of those things to make sure that they make sense to us and so on. Broadly speaking, local people make better decisions than those of us back elsewhere. But yes, that's the, that trick of we're trying to be consistent without being prescriptive that we've talked about before. Okay. So a couple of responses here, the first one is secondary school is pretty much set as like they had this plan was ready to go. We just needed to get confirmation from the ministry. So people that are senior secondary or at Fraser View, et cetera, they're, they should be sort of good to go with the assignment. The trickier bit is middle school, we are still fiddling some bits there because it's tricky. As far as point five seven now, my understanding is typically you're paid over the course of the year, but do you have any? Okay. We can ask HR about that, okay?
No, sorry, I wasn't, I was, I'm gonna, I just wanted to get your name so I can add you to the list. Okay, sorry, I know it's, I know. Question, you guys are going to look into some of those specifics around.
So I'm going to go to Jaclyn, who I've unmuted. Jaclyn, you had a question?
Yeah, I just have a clarification about, I can't remember who brought it up, but asking about adults wearing masks, not just when they're like outside their learning group. And so I was just wondering for that, are we talking about just at the high school level, was that being talked about? Are we talking about at all levels?
My impression was that we were talking about adults at all levels. And then of course, we had a little further conversation where I described one of the ones is, is simply visitors. So for example, when I go into the building, I wear a mask when a parent goes in. I think somebody said like Walmart, I think that was you, Ryan. So that kind of idea, whereas the, the local classroom teacher doesn't necessarily follow that. So I mean, this would be if this is something the board wants to look at, we'd have to go through different variations are on it. And whether it's everybody or if it's just middle and secondary, and if it's just visitors and so on, because there are several different nuances or levels to that.
Well, I just wanted a clarification on what they were considering and just, yeah, just clarification on that. Because I, I think some people might have, might feel very isolated if they deal with any sort of issues with hearing. And one of the things is too, is there's a lot of people out there that their hearing does not, they have issues with hearing and they were, they use reading a lot, but they don't necessarily qualify for a designation, for the heart of hearing designation. And some kids have intermediate hearing loss that comes and goes. So those kinds of things are just a concern and how isolating it could be for those kids. Because it's different when you're going into Walmart for a little bit, whereas where you're at school and you literally having a hard time being able to communicate with adults and feel safe.
Absolutely, and I think that's part of why there might want to be a differentiation between the teacher and the visitor.
Okay, thank you.
That was something that was brought up and what will happen. That this is something you want to pursue, a motion will be put forward at a public meeting.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. And so I assume people could hear that here, I don't have to re-unzoom or whatever with that. Okay, next question. Yes, but sorry, sorry, the question was what is their daytime custodial elementary? So for the benefit of the people on Zoom, the question was daytime custodians in elementary, the answer is yes, we're hiring eight positions. However, we have the challenge of filling the eight positions. And that's an ongoing employment issue, not just for Mission School District, but for many people right now. Yeah, if you know anyone who needs a job, we got, we got jobs, we'll hire, so there you go. So yes, you want, so the question is about PPE? So for the clarification of people on Zoom, yes, we are providing some PPE, some of it is for specific positions such as those that are enjoying bodily fluids, coming out them, et cetera, and so they might have face shields and so on. Okay.
I think I've been reading in those documents that there, the expectation of those hand washing protocols seven times a day.
Yeah.
Are still in effect.
Yeah, I want to make a comment on that though, because people can start doing the math and work out about how much time it takes adequately hand wash and so on. So I, I guess a comment on this is, yes, those are the guidelines, we do have to use some common sense. There will also be, I mean, you know, people using hand sanitizers and so on, which is not as good as hand washing, but sometimes that's a preferable option to having 30 minutes of kids washing their hands while we go to do the next thing and so on.
Well, it's just if, if I do a thing in my classroom, how come it's just H for animals?
Well, it's just, if, if I do a thing in my classroom, how come it's, um, age for animals? Right, if you can't wash snake, everybody's throw, and you have a routine and it takes about five minutes for a whole class.
Right.
But the protocols in June were one, within the time, wash the hands, like six kids took.
Yeah, and this is, we also, yeah, we also get in the thing between a nice elementary classroom that sync with the, you know, and all that kind of stuff versus that everyone has to go down the hallway and so, so. Online, so the next one is, uh, I believe, I'm just gonna unmute, is Alicia Hurd. So, your question?
Hi, um, so I, I, I kind of asked about remote learning and you had answered that in the chat, that the option was Summit. So with the option of Summit, I have diverse needs learning children, so am I going to get that ISP support, that LST support and that stuff through Summit?
So, uh, the partial answer is, um, we, if there are significant, excuse me, if there's significant needs, we want to run this through, uh, Director of Instruction Carolyn Schmore to see and it work best for someone that is at home, um, and, uh, what their structure and plan is.
Okay, because they already receive stuff at Windebank. So like they are receiving their.
Right.
Things, they've met, met all of the qualifications, but, you know, we've got a program and stuff already in place, and if they don't go to school.
Yeah.
At Windebank, they won't get it. So you're saying Summit's my option, but I'm wondering, is Summit really the option?
I guess what I want to do is I'd want you to connect with Carolyn to talk about what's the best program and plan for your child? And may, may end up being a kind of merger where you have a, a sort of outreach staff continue to work with them and so on.
Okay, good, yeah, because it, it's not just one. There's four of mine in, in the school, it's probably one of those emails that was like, we're looking at a big learning group.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I will connect with Carolyn then.
That sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I have, uh, Lisa.
Um, I, I'm not actually sure about that, I don't think so in the basis that, um, they actually currently have more time than lunch hour is, and I think we're able to shift it over most places, but I, I don't know if I want to confirm that. Yeah, and it's gonna depend, like, obviously, some schools, there is no change at all, right? Because there's a small accord, right? So the question for people on Zoom was, what about, are we going to increase the number of noon hour supervisors because of this? And we're not sure, but probably not by a significant amount if it does happen, because it would just be a limited number of schools and so on. The time, sorry, the time, yeah, yeah, sorry, the, the, the amount of time that we're. Yeah. Uh, depends on how they do their, uh, noon hours and so on. Okay, next online is, uh, Christina. I, oh, hold on, you're muted, a second.
Thanks, I just have a couple of questions. Um, if, is there going to be extra prep time if we do a hybrid or medically accommodated model? So if you had a hybrid model for online for MSS, for example, will there be any extra prep time to allow facilitation of that?
I'd rather not answer with all these elementary teachers in the room. So under our, under our current model timetables that we've got for middle and secondary, currently at this exact moment, middle and secondary teachers actually get a little bit more prep time. The M2 has not been concerned with that. Strangely, they did argue about more for, uh, for other teachers, but anyway, that's, that's current information.
Okay, and then last year also, um, it was assessment that was so hard to deliver. Yeah, will we have any access to assessment software, like better assessment software?
Good question, uh, I'm probably not the person to ask about that, we'll, uh, we actually just, as a side note, tech committee has to reform for September to work through a whole bunch of things about remote learning and what software platforms to be used, what can be for assessment, et cetera, so good question, I don't have an answer for.
Yeah, because forums took about two hours to make a test, and sorry, one last question. MSS has one bathroom, one stall for one half of the entire school, will there be anything kind of about that?
Good question, um, uh, we currently don't have any plan on increasing the number of toilets at Mission Secondary. However, uh, that's going to be an interesting conversation I can have with Jim Schmore about what we can do to mitigate that, but, um, I, I, I don't have an answer to that right now, and just on a related note, one of the other things that the ministry has acknowledged this is that another key issue during COVID and other pandemics is ventilation, and there has been some kind of pledge about improving ventilation. Okay, everyone here is laughing, just, you know, yeah, and just so you know, there's about 2,000 school buildings in British Columbia, and if we start right now, by 21, 25, we might get through them all. So there are some things that, uh, we, we're, I, I don't have a response to that's going to be very satisfactory. But nonetheless, that is an important issue about washrooms, um, and we'll have to. We'll find it, I, yeah, sorry, I don't have a good answer for that one, Christina, thanks. Okay, that's three questions, so. I, I think it's sort of the twice a day, but I, I, do you have any information on that? This question is about how often are toilets cleaned at Mission Secondary? Yeah. That would be a local decision, like that's, because again, Silverdale is totally different from Mission Secondary, right? Okay, so the next one I think is, uh, I think the next one is Dionne. Hold on, oh, I'm really having trouble on muteing Dionne, maybe that means something. There we go.
That's not nice. Thanks, um, so my question was, is there going to be specific PPE requests from specific schools? Or are teachers going to be making requests of students and families?
I think there's multiple questions there, I'll try and answer them best I can, so the first one is, uh, like through, say, uh, Carolyn Schmore and her department, there, we're going to know that this particular teacher is going to need this equipment or this EA because of this specific situation with this student. Okay, so that's, that's item one. I expect that we will have requests from other staff members that would like a piece of equipment that they have not been provided with, and then, uh, we'll have to explore whether or not that is an appropriate safety measure or not for that particular position. I mean, I guess you could make the argument, everybody could wear a face shield, but, I mean, the practical limitations on how many face shields we have, as well as is that actually going to help anything, or indeed in some cases it might impair things. Uh, the second part of your question had to do with.
Parents being requested, we've heard, um, some school districts where the parents have actually been asked to bring or supply Plexiglas.
Oh.
Yeah, hand sanitizer, things like that, so.
I, I don't, I don't think that's the, uh, feeling here in Mission, but I'd make a couple of comments on it. First of all, we're never going to stop anyone from having hand sanitizer in their backpack. I would have a concern with everybody bringing a two foot by three foot piece of. I, I think the, the one though would be, I mean, we'll provide some masks, but I do mask a little bit like school supplies, like, yeah, here's a pencil, but we can't keep giving you a pencil every day. So there are going to be some expectations that Johnny's on his third mask this week, and it's maybe time that he brings one from home. That, that, that might be one, not Plexiglas shields or whatever.
Yeah, okay, it's just, it's actually come up, it's been a, a supply that was requested, so.
Okay, if that happens to Mission, somebody should let me know, because I don't think that's part of our intention.
Okay, thank you.
I have you written down a stripy shirt in the back. I have two questions that are hoping to be able to call. One of them is, is there any way to give an, and I have my own authority to be pressured to bring two staffs back from the school so that we can avoid.
You want to talk, this is a question about flu shots.
There's no shortcuts, and the last time we tried to do it, we had challenges finding a contract to do it.
So people online, um, the question's about flu shots, and, um, we are looking into it. Our last go around with flu shots, we had trouble trying to find a contractor to do it. Um, I hear, uh, my friend Vladimir is gonna hook us up, uh, it's coming from Russia, so, there you go. Okay, sorry, do you have a second question? So we've had a couple of different requests from specific schools, and we've worked through those ones on a, I don't know what you would call it, case by case basis as to what they're doing. And, you know, I guess the flip comment is we don't want to delay it for six weeks or whatever, because we've already lost a couple of days, but I think that's been worked on at a couple of schools anyway. Okay? Online, okay, so, um, online, we have, uh, Shannon, I think is next, and I can't unmute. Oh.
Oh, no, it is Shannon, sorry, sorry. Um, I actually have a question about the, at MSS, the schedules were done up for the grade 12s in June, and they had to be completed. Are they going to be changed?
So, um, i- is your question in reference to a student signed up for particular classes?
Well, they, like, they had a thing where they sent them all out through the, that new, uh, MyEd thing, or, um, and so we all had to view them, and then if there was any changes that were made, they had to be done by the end of June, they said no changes. Where, I'm just concerned that everything's gonna totally change and my kid's gonna lose certain courses, is that?
So, the key is with the, the, the model they've gone with will have, and I'm gonna use the word minimal.
Okay.
Adjustments to either students' choices and/or teacher assignments, I'm gonna use the word minimal, not nothing, because something or whatever. But this is a key point, is that if, if the ministry had told us no, and we had to go to a different system like quarter or whatever, a whole bunch of choices, we actually calculated yesterday, um, probably 60 to 70 elective choices would go away. And that doesn't mean we'd lose 70 class, to be clear, what it would mean is, there's five kinds of English 10, they all become one kind of English 10. That, that kind of thing, so, uh, knock on, I have no wood near me, but knock on plastic that there should be an absolute minimum of, sorry, you can't take this course you signed up for. It's still possible for sure with all this group stuff, but the, the idea is to remove that as much as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, oh.
Um, on the topic of masks, I'm not going to, but I do have a question. I have many issues, so I have to be same question, for those of us who have community compromise, which is called, or a good issue, a good issue has, have their own, or it's, or the community compromise, they should be online. Are. To, or by, and I'm, you're accusing me of that tactfully encourage of students, even in a safe area, or. Are we allowed to say, or, I have a seat for a seat home, I really want the answer to be unsafe. I really appreciate it, yes, you use more masks, I'm not going to penalize you if you can't, we're not going to judge you. Or, nothing like that, but I would just like the person to say, I would rather do a mask, are we allowed?
So, great question, so for the Zoom people, Zoom people, it sounds like the Zoom people, sorry. The Zoom people, the question is, are we allowed, as say the classroom teacher, to tactfully, respectfully, diplomatically ask students, hey, I have somebody at home that's got a vulnerability or whatever, would you please consider wearing a mask? And the answer is yes, there is a asterisk here and a couple of points, but absolutely. Uh, the, the asterisks are first off that, as it currently stands right now, um, when we make a decision that is above and beyond what the province has mandated, it is subject to challenge, so for example, if we said all students K to six or whatever must wear masks, a parent could say, that's not in any provincial guideline, and, and we would be, we would have difficulty sort of, you know, fighting against it or whatever. And the other part is kind of what we were talking about earlier on, which is how you, as the professional educator in your room, communicate that to, um, to the kids. I've, I've been listening to a podcast in which, yeah, there was, um, really amazing teachers, there's just sort of recordings of them, how they communicate with their, their kids, and there are other ones that, let's just say, were less than ideal. And so what I wouldn't want is it being a guilt trippy thing or an accusatory thing or whatever, because that goes back to that judgment thing. But, um, you know, hey, it would be a really great favor to me, and it might not even be all the time, because obviously we're gonna have something where maybe you do have to take it off, or you're standing, we are there to do your presentation and so on, and, and so on. But I think that broadly speaking, that's perfectly permissible. The current guideline is that, um, at the person's discretion, but that doesn't mean that you can't say, I would appreciate it if you would consider wearing a mask in my classroom or space at this time because X, Y, Z.
Um, is that okay?
Yeah.
I would love to know too, but maybe some sort of information would go out to parents, and to, like, to parents and to. To remind classes of the conversation that we need to have with people, because, judging by the friends that I have who are on a different level of looking at masks, I mean, let's say. Um, all the kids who are coming in, wearing or not wearing masks, like, I don't like if they need their masks all day, because.
Yeah.
They're learning that from me, and there are a whole bunch of kids who are going to come to the school who have been told from their parents that a mask is a parent day, and that is not today, and people, yeah, Marty. But for those of you who are, if we have the responsibility of adults to teach the kids that whether that or not, they're not allowed to be accusing and arguing about it, and all the things that are gonna happen both ways, because it's just simply not, it's, it's gonna come from the parents both sides. And I would love that with the school of parents, I hope the teachers don't, but I'm not having that.
So, if, for the people on Zoom, this, the further is about the respectful and, and not bullying when it comes to masks and so on, and there's people with divergent views and so on. And, and hopefully that's been part of my messaging too, um, to parents and so on. And I have to say, in my position, I get emails from the, I'm terrified to ever leave my house again, right over to the lizard people and Bill Gates, organize this hoax. And we all have to go to public school together, and that's a really tricky space for us to navigate through. And that key message of being respectful, and, uh, you can see it on both sides where, how come you're not wearing masks? Don't you love the rest of us, you terrible horrible person, versus a, hey nerd, I see you've got your mask on, right? I mean, it's, 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 well, present company, et cetera. Sorry? Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Just a reminder, you have a hot name to get to a quick mention, just, um, but, um, but yeah, so sort of like a motion to a step, so we need a motion to a step, because it's been two and a half hour.
For the people on Zoom, they have just extended the meeting because it's supposed to end.
Sorry, Tracy, how long are we still? Well, I know.
Seven minutes.
I don't know, 15, I don't know, it depends on how many questions we've got left. I'm, I'm thinking we actually don't, based on what I'm seeing there and what I'm seeing here, I don't think we actually have a lot, so we've got the motion if we need it for 15 minutes, let's say, okay? I'll miss the, I'll miss the national. Um, so yeah, what, is, is, is there anything else here question wise? I think that there are some things that, um, the board, we can, I'll send out a couple of emails, sort of as some follow ups, some things that, uh, were, uh, here maybe, and we can kind of, to be discussed sort of over email, um, and that works for the board.
Oh, we have, Dionne has her hand up. So Dionne's causing trouble. Okay, I think we're both clicking on at the same time.
That's what happens.
There we go, okay, you're good. No, you're not. Okay, don't touch anything, Dionne, we're gonna get this.
Can she type that?
Okay, we're just gonna see if Dionne can do it.
There we go. You almost got away with it. Um, my question is, is, um, students in the high school, they'll be receiving a notice as to what day they are to report to school, is it? Because not all 1,400 students are reporting on the 10th, they have specific. They have specific days of the week that they're attending, right? When will those assignments go out?
Correct. Well, so basically the high school had to wait till today to see if their plan was approved. Um, and, uh, since it's been approved today, I, you know, they were leaving here already, like we had a, uh, a workshop where today and they left in, in the afternoon to go back and work on timetable things. So, um, I had, uh, previous conversations with the principal there about, um, notification of parents and all that some stuff in the plan is to have a letter out this week to parents. Um, I don't know if that will specifically include that, you know, Angus Wilson will come on Thursdays or whatever it is. But that I will assume is forthcoming fairly soon. Um, there's gonna be some interesting wrinkles with it, because I, I just thought about the fact that if students are not coming to school based on families, for example, you might have a disproportionate number of W's show up or not show up. So there might be interesting things with that, but we'll see.
Okay, and then one last one then, just to be a troublemaker. Um, MyEd, will that be opening up again? Because right now it's locked for, for parents and families. We don't have access to it.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it was, it was down for, uh, a work, uh, last week or something for a couple of days and was, but I, I assume so, but I, I don't know anything about what's up with MyEd. I will, I can find out and send you an email.
Awesome, thank you. That's it?
Okay, thanks, Dion.
Well, thanks everybody for coming today, and I, I do hope that, that some of your questions, um, a little bit of reassurance, maybe not to everything, but some, but yeah, so everyone else. And I do want to say really thank you to staff for coming up with this plan. Like I said, you know, there's, there's not been a summer vacation this year, um, even as trustees, we felt it. So, um, I just wanna, you know, say thank you so much to every staff member that has, has really put in this. And everyone who's been a part of it, on parents, teachers, guardians, all of it. It's just been, uh, yeah, I just want to acknowledge how much it is and say thank you. So I think if that's it, we are, uh, meeting adjourned?
The meeting is adjourned. So thank you, Zoom people.
Do we staff chairs or we?
Leave them.
You have to touch anything.